One, seven, oh, one. That's a doer. It's real cool. Good evening. Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the mayor and council. The city of Bisbee County, Cochise, state of Arizona, is being held on Tuesday, November first, 2022, at seven oh one P. M., located here in our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanita Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sui.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Parkin, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Logan Dodd, operations manager, Tim Cox, police chief, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney. And Melissa Hartman, liner. Sorry. (laughing).
Well, thank you, everybody. And buddy out there on the wild, worldwide web. Anyway, for a moment's silence tonight, I just want us to think about the political rhetoric that's going on in a very sad situation where some elected officials or their families have been vandalized or gone after. And I'm glad we live in our little city that is much more, I believe, calm, but I do believe that we all have to take solace and respect what is happening across our country. And I know the big boat's going to be coming up next Tuesday, and I'm hoping that after that, we can all settle down and consider what's best for everybody. But let's give a moment of silence to thank the political leaders that actually stand up to work, and that we're not going to hold them in some sort of bad way in our heads. Thank you. All right, thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I have no proclamations, but tonight I just want to give a couple of shout-outs. First, to our first annual Bisbee Arts Festival, which I think was a huge success. There was over two thousand of attendees that actually went through in those two days. I just wanted to let everybody know how well received it was, how well it was done. And I have received thanks here from the actual Bisbee Arts Commission for all that the staff has done to help support it. I want to thank, of course, Nina and Ashley were mentioned personally, and actually so is Josh in the arts department. It takes a lot to put one of these together, and I just wanted to reiterate the whole idea that we really did remind our region that we are an artist community and an art destination. And, I mean, this book, which contains one hundred and thirty-one local artists' work that was submitted, is really something that I keep going over and thinking to myself. You know, I always thought we were kind of an eclectic group, but I didn't realize we were such an eclectic art group. And there was everything in here you'd ever want to look at or think about. So, so thank you, everybody, that did that and worked on that. And just as a reminder, for anybody that didn't actually see the art, it's still open on Saturdays and Sundays from ten to five o'clock through Thanksgiving weekend. So if you didn't get a chance to get down there, it's free, doesn't cost anything, go in. Look at what we have in our town. It's really amazing, so. Secondly, I just want to give a shout-out. I heard that our first ever green cemetery crawl. What am I going to call that?
Tour.
Tour, okay.
Historical tour.
Historical tour. I like a crawl through a cemetery, huh?
Historical tour.
Yeah, historical tour. It was a great success, and I swear, if I can keep my eyes open, I'm going to go do it. I just think it's another great thing that we have to offer locals and visitors that come to see really a very historic cemetery. And, I mean, I know people were first buried in their old city park, and they got moved over there. I mean, we're talking way back, so, so anyway, that was a, that's a great thing. So those are two shout-outs I want to give tonight, and thanks for everybody, so. Anyway, let's move along. This is, let's see, call the public. We have no one signed up, so we'll move right into general business. First order, of course, would be accounts payable. Could I have a motion?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Sorry.
I have a motion and a second to pay accounts payable. Questions?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, jump.
Page seven. Water as usual. What is the base again on Dressey Park? The base bill? Do you know what's up in it?
When I pulled it off, it changes quite frequently.
No, I mean...
Oh, the standard...
The meter.
Meter, yeah, thank you, the meter.
With that size, we can open one hundred and fifty, I think it's...
Zero. Zero. Two-inch meter or four-inch meter?
It's four, two-inch.
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 Two-inch meter base price is two fifty, something.
Well, can't be, because the bill's two nineteen. It just seems, I know, it just seems, just seemed high compared to everybody else in this time. It is the season, the time of the season. Again, I always wonder if there's any air leaks going on at Dressey Park.
We turned it all off for a few days, just to see if the meter kicked it off or if nothing. I think it comes down to usage in that area. There's a lot of regular people there.
Okay, thanks. That's it, for me.
Over on this side, looking to the right. Oh, okay. I will...
I looked, I looked. I did such a good job.
No, hon- honestly.
Yeah, yeah, keep going. Yeah, I could keep going.
Honestly, this is what our part, our responsibility is to question and look, and so, much as we like to make fun, it is, it is something that's important, so. We do have a motion and a second to pay accounts payable, subject to funds, in the amount of four hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Could I have roll call?
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Here.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. This is, we have items A through H. We have a couple of minutes to approve. We have one resignation from the Arts Commission, another one from the Board of Adjustments, and we have two parking facility use permits and two liquor permits. I'm going to pull item E, just for a little, something I can say about it. Anybody else have anything to pull? Seeing none, I make a motion that we approve the count. The consent agenda as listed, items A through B and F through H.
A second now.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, items A through B and F through H. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Very none, the ayes have it. Pull item E, because I do have a question, but when I approve this, if you look at the application, their insurance doesn't run for what, this is a way ahead asking, but their insurance runs out before then. So I think that we, to make a motion, we should make sure that I don't, I only approve this if their insurance includes the new date. That's my concern. They still want to approve it without having that insurance. Also, the other stipulation I'd like to make is since they plan on closing the road in front of the ballpark, that they also make sure that there are signs that say detour ahead or a road closed ahead so people can make, so they don't push traffic back into the neighborhood when they get around the corner and say, oh, this, I can't go anymore. So, those two things.
We can, uh, perhaps more, we can come on that.
Right, so, just the signage, and then as part of the approval, they have to update their insurance to include the new date. So with that, I will make a motion to approve item E as listed, with the updated insurance and also signage for the road closure, as I said. Motion and second to approve item E on the consent agenda, with those stipulations. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Very none, the ayes have it, so move. Okay. And here, moving on to item three. These are old business. First one will be the discussion of possible approval of ordinance O dash twenty-two eleven. This is amending the city of Bisbee, Article seven point one, light pollution, and the Bisbee City Code, zoning code, Article three, six, seven, and nine. This is our second reading. If there are any concerns or discussions, go ahead and go on. I'll entertain a motion now.
I move to approve ordinance O dash twenty-two dash eleven, amending the city of Bisbee Code, Article seven point ten, light pollution, and the Bisbee zoning code, Article thirty-six, seven, and nine.
A second.
We have a motion and two seconds. No, I should pick your choice there, Ashley. Uh, to approve ordinance O dash twenty-two eleven, all those, let's see, it's an ordinance, we gotta have a, uh, roll call, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to old business, this will be the second reading and final approval for ordinance O dash twenty-two dash fifteen. This is amending the Bisbee City Code, Article eight, business regulations by repealing and replacing section eight point nine, vacation rentals and short-term rentals. Second reading, do you have anything to say, city manager, nothing? How about, about any other concerns or from the council?
Mayor, do you want me to address some of the concerns that were raised by the industry?
Um, we talked about those. I don't really have a problem with what the industry, and we, I've received several emails, but I'm thinking I'm very comfortable with it, the rest of the council is, as is...
Just so the council's aware, one of the things the industry doesn't like is having a requirement that you have to have all individuals who are staying background checked for sexual offender status. They think it should just be the individual who's reserving the house. The reason for having that sexual offender notification requirement is because you're going into a residence, and anytime a sexual offender moves, you know, relocates, they're, they're supposed to give notice. And this is one way to try to avoid somebody going into a neighborhood without having to give that notice. And one of the reasons that I suggest that we, we keep it with, although it is more work for the, the agency to do the background checks, is because it's just too easy to have a straw person putting their information to reserve that rental, and that individual who is a sexual offender not have their information known or disclosed, and you never know. So just, it provides that additional security and safety measure for the residents, because if you're, you know, living in a house next door and you've got young kids, you'd want to know if a sexual offender is staying next door to you. And that's one of the reasons why those notification requirements are there for sexual offenders.
You could find that out if it was a normal house, because you could just go on the list and see.
Right.
These short-term things are kind of hard that way, so. But that's why, after discussing, I was, I'm fine with it, and nothing is written, whatever, but we're doing what we can do now, and, and I think we've given enough time. We've noticed the amount for the commitment amount, so from January one, we will start taking applications, so. All right, I have a mo-?
No, not yet, not yet.
I move to approve ordinance O dash twenty-two dash fifteen, amending the city of Bisbee Code, Article eight, business regulations by repealing and replacing section eight point nine, vacation rentals and short-term rentals.
A second.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance O dash twenty-two dash fifteen. I'll take a roll call.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, everybody, for a lot of work, and I really want to recognize staff and our city attorney and all the work that was put towards making this happen, so. All right, now we'll move on to new business, new business. This will be number number five. This is public hearing on the EPA grant application for mitigation and cleanup of the Hillcrest building. And I'll let Melissa come to the mic and give us a little background on this one. You don't mind?
No.
Your go-to on this one.
Well, good evening, mayor and council. You may recall a few meetings ago that you approved some funds for a consultant to write an EPA grant for us for the mitigate mitigation and abatement of the Hillcrest. We are in the process of being almost complete with tonight's public hearing, that all the pieces that the city was required to do will be finalized. So we have posted the application. We'll do a call to see if there are any comments tonight, but we're, we will talk with the EPA consultant tomorrow, and we, it gets turned in, I think, in fifteen to date, fifteen days, so we have two weeks to review the final. And this is for up to five hundred thousand for asbestos and lead and everything in Hillcrest. And it's such a good thing that it's piqued interest of all applicants, so.
Thank you for that. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. I'll ask if there's any members of the public in support of this item that would like to come and speak. Seeing none, is there any thing, any notifications through email or letters?
No, sir.
All right, I'll now ask if there's any members of the public that would like to speak in opposition of this. Seeing none, do we have any other correspondence to that?
No, sir.
Well, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will open it up for discussion among council members. Any questions or concerns?
I think it's a good thing to move forward with.
I think it's necessary, and this put us one step closer to getting this come to reality, so I will...
No action necessary.
Oh, oh, we don't have to make a motion. Just a public hearing, yay, thank you. See, I'm following my little thing that says ask for a motion. But I'm learning, it's only been two years, guys. Almost. All right, thank you. Moving on, item six. Item six is the discussion of possible approval of a grant agreement between the state of Arizona, the office of governor, and the city of Bisbee for Camp Naco. This is a big, huge announcement, and I want to, of course, turn it over to city manager Parkin, and also I'd like to give some time to Becky, who, without this, would never happen, so. Go ahead, city manager.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. It probably put smiles on more faces than I've seen in a long time last week when we, when this agreement showed up from the governor's office. As you know, we have been working on rehabilitating the property known as Camp Naco now for a good number of years, and the Naco Heritage Alliance has been working on ways to rehabilitate Camp Naco for a good number of years before the city owned it. And so this has not only been a long-term project, it's been labor of love. The, quite frankly, the, the, the trigger point was back in May, when we were named one of the eleven most endangered places, historic places in America, and that created, that, that made my phone ring. And in all the years that I've been doing this, I've never seen something like that happen, where I just, the phone rang, and people were starting, were asking me to apply for money. This, this one, of course, is through the office of the governor's, Budget and Strategic Planning Office, and it is ARPA money. So it's federal money allocated to the state for them to make similar grants around the state for, for, all the projects, of course, are eligible for ARPA funding. So we, I will say that one of the more interesting parts of, of the application process was when we submitted our one point two million dollar application, and they got a phone call and were, were asked to increase it to four point six million. That's also never happened to me, so, anywhere in public or private life. So what we're, of course, recommending this evening is for mayor and council to approve this grant agreement and authorize the mayor to sign. And so at this point, I'd like to recognize Rebecca Roscoe for a few bit, for a few words, or as many as you like. Four point six million, you can talk as long as you want.
Well, I think what I want to say from the bottom of my heart, after twenty-two years, is thank you to Bisbee, because without you guys taking it on, this would not have happened. So the thought that we're going to make Camp Naco live again with this money will go an enormous distance. They chose the four point six million from our original master plan, which I hope that, you know, with that, with inflation, but we have some other resources coming along, but this is going to make this place a part of our community, so thank you.
I, I do want to say one thing. I was at a mixer the other night with some people from La Chuka City, and they looked at me, and they just said, wow! You know? And, and actually, they were thankful that we did take this on, and that, and they were happy for us, so. There was no hard feelings at all with them, and in fact, they, they were quite, quite taken back and really quite complimentary, to say the least, so, anyway. That's where we got it from, as you know, and, and I'm just glad we were able to do something.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Becky, for all the hard work over the years you've, you know, kept the city alive and moved forward.
Thank you. A lot of help, though.
It took, it took a village, really, you know, I mean. And I hope it's going to be a great village out there, because that's what's going to be needed.
Yeah.
I want to thank you, Becky. Just a question, this, this grant was based on a plan you probably, you have, so we have the plans in place for the public to know, so already have plans?
Yes. Well, we had a, a master plan that was completed by poster Frost and Quirto in two thousand fifteen. And he looked at each, they looked at each of the buildings and gave what their estimate at that point would be to rehab the building, and a couple of ideas of what would be. And then as we've gone along, we've had community meetings in Naco about what they might want to see happen there. A couple of things they wanted was community space and possibly a library. We've talked about museum space. Museum space was something that the governor really wanted to see in this project as we go forward. And then space, you know, we've got ten, the old ten officers quarters, possibility for either artist and scholar in residence or affordable housing for those, and ideas for the building, the other buildings, but also make a community place, people, where people can come.
So there'll be adjustment to the original plan, or basically, yeah, okay, that's, that's what we need to do.
Well, and, you know, four point six million in two thousand, in twenty fifteen isn't going to make it today. So, you know, we have another grant in progress, and we also have decided not, two of the buildings that have collapsed in the meantime, we're going to make into sort of a, a stage open area, so the, the estimate for those two buildings for rehab will go back into the pool, and I think that'll bring us very close to being able to do all of the other buildings.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Chief? So one of the, Becky alluded to another grant, that was, that was one of the other phone calls I got after we got the designation of an eleven most danger, endangered list. And it's from a, and it's from a private foundation, fairly large private foundation, and basically, the gist of that conversation started with, we would like you to apply for three and a half million dollars. Okay? So they, they already knew how much, and I just wanted to say, yeah, that, that has been a little bit more of a challenge, I might say. It's, it's, if, if I was doing a doctoral dissertation, I think I would probably feel like what we're doing is kind of like that, which makes me happy that I'm not doing a doctoral dissertation, but they are very, they, and they're, and what is really happening is, is it's thoroughly vetting our plan to, to, to sort of refine it beyond the point that we've already gone on, on that project, and, and part of that grant will be bricks and mortar money, but, but the big thing is that we will actually be able to, over the next four years, with that grant, realize the arts, the culture, the history of, of Camp Naco and, and the region in general. So that's kind of the spark plug that'll make the thing turn alive. And, and also, one of the side benefits, too, is that assuming both of these grants become a reality, that will also create five jobs, which will also then create a hundred construction jobs, which will then create other opportunities within the greater community. And, and it will hopefully more than, more than mitigate the loss of turquoise valley in terms of the employment, in terms of the space, because part of the space is expected to be convocation space. And as you know, we lost a pretty good spot down there where most of our larger meetings and wedding receptions and so forth took place in the old days, and, and, and my not-so-well-kept secret is that even though I don't really have an interest in the golf course, I would certainly like to see that WPA building brought back to life at some point in the future as well, so. Because if you think about it, it's really quite, it's really quite a place. But first things first, this is a four-year project, at least, and we want to express our gratitude to everybody, and, and most of you sitting at the table have, in a tangible way, supported this project, and want to thank you for that, and, and hope that in, in the very near future, we can start actually doing, we can start doing things there before we get all that far into the construction process, so. And, and some of this money will help make that happen, so thank you, and staff recommends proof.
Well, one is going to happen tonight, I'm almost sure, so the other one, every time I watch the PBS NewsHour, I always see that one pop up, so I'm, so I keep bowing my head to that one. So we will find out soon enough, but I know what it is, but I can't tell you. I'll have to kill it.
Such temptation.
Okay, there we go.
You can leave which way you want.
All right, I love teasing. Okay, let's have a, about a motion. Who would like?
I move to accept and approve a grant agreement from the state of Arizona, office of the governor, in the amount of four point six million for the restoration of Camp Naco.
A second now.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant application from the state of Arizona in the amount of four point six million dollars. I'm going to have a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Can you imagine? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a second to invite you all, we're going to have an open house there on Saturday from ten to two, to celebrate this... We're going to have open house there on Saturday from 10 to 2 to celebrate this grant and that we won the Garrison Prize for Restore Preservation, the highest prize in the state. So, we're going to be celebrating this weekend.
Okay, thank you.
And then you can go to ballpark.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that. Let's hope that's one of many that are coming our way. So, all right, we'll move on now to item seven, which is discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-2217. This is amending the city code, Article 2.6.9, the procedures for the transfer of city real property. Remember, we put this on hold some time ago, and we now have these rules written, and I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney.
This is what you've really been waiting for all night.
I have.
Well, anybody who's trying to buy anything, yes.
Yeah.
As the council will recall, council agreed to stay pending, pending sales of, of city property until we tried to address the, the procedures and process for the sale of city property. And this addresses the sale and, the sale of city property with regard to property that the city's not actively seeking to sell. It's one thing if, you know, for the city to put out an RFP like we did for Hillcrest and something, but the city is constantly being inundated by requests to purchase this sliver of property or a 10-foot section off of a piece of city property. So, we want to make sure that the, the process is, is clear and that the individual who's coming to the city asking to purchase that property bears the burden and responsibility of doing the due diligence and, and providing the information that the city needs to consider that, which would include if it's less than a full parcel, they've got to do a, a survey, provide us with the legal description of what it is they're wanting to purchase. They would also have to provide us with a, with an appraisal. That way, the city's not having to say, you know, like, it's been done in the past, "Well, what, where did you come up with this recommended amount per square foot?" "Well, I pulled it off of comps from other properties and stuff." This sets a very clear procedure and process for, okay, you've got to have the legal description in the survey, you've got to have an appraisal, and it goes through an initial review process for administration first to determine, is this something we really want to bring to council? Is this a parcel that we already have, you know, that we need for a certain purpose, that we know we're not going to sell, something like that? And it provides for a, an appeals process if, if for some reason, the administrative review is denied. And then, then it pretty much follows the same process what we had before where it comes to council. But also amended somewhat the, the provisions in, in Section E with regard to the value of property that wouldn't necessarily need to go to a, a public auction, because that was one of the other things, is where somebody comes in, they want to buy this, this piece of property that's historically been associated with their, their property. They even have a, you know, say, a storage shed or something on it, and then you have to put it up for a public bid. And anybody can come and bid on this, and it just, we want to make sure that the rules are fair and acknowledged. And so, there's a process, not only for the, you know, the value of that, which we, which I propose increasing from 5,000 to 7,000, given the inflationary rates since last year, we may want to go to 25,000. But then also acknowledging that no other adjoining property owner has a claim or wants to make a claim on it, or that it's been historically used in, in association with that property. It goes through the same process of, once, it goes through the administrative process and it goes to P&amp;Z for initial review and recommendation, and then the council, then council would set the, the bid price if it was a, an auction item, or if not, set the purchase price, which again, would require the appraisal, which would set that minimum amount. Are there any specific questions with regard to the proposed code amendment?
It also includes a 300-foot notification so all neighbors know that this is happening.
I have on, gee, on the net proceeds for any such sale of city property should be used for capital improvement of this, of this city. It should be maintained in an appropriate account for this purpose. When you say capital improvement of the city, what are you, what, what, what are you talking about?
So, you have a specific account that is set up for capital improvements for the city. Road, road, anything that is, you know, a, a construction project, the building in the city hall, those are all capital improvements. What you don't want to do is, an example is, you don't want to take your credit card and go and use that to eat out of a nice restaurant, and then you're paying interest on your credit card for something that was a, a consumed item way back when. So, you want, you, you want your, your real estate, which is a capital asset, if you sell a capital asset, you kind of, you want to keep those, those funds available for other capital assets.
What discretion, though? I understand what capital.
The council's discretion.
Okay, I just want to, I mean, it's clear.
Yeah, the council still has to approve all capital expenditures and all that. This just says, and this part hadn't changed from the, the prior section, but it's, and it's a, a common accounting process where if you, you sell a capital item, you reserve those funds for the, the purchase or improvement of other capital items.
I, I'd be con, okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a little, a little bit of historical reference, because Joe had just indicated this is, this is not a new section, technically. When, I, I want to say it was in 2006, maybe 2007, we started getting requests from people to buy a corner of a piece of city-owned property that was under, underneath their garage. And at that time, we, we had no, no roadmap to determine how to do that. So, Mr. McKinnon was the city attorney at the time, and we sat down and worked out an ordinance which is eventually adopted that, you know, called for the public auction and all the other things that we're used to seeing in the course of, of conducting this type of business. It was a very big deal at the time, and, and justifiably so, that if we sold a, if we sold a city asset, okay, whether it would be real property or something of value, that it be segregated from the general fund so that it was separately accounted for and segregated so that it didn't just disappear. Okay? And, you know, I've heard a lot of stories about the time before I got here about money disappearing, and I don't know if any of them are true, but, 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 but just, just suffice to say, it was a matter of concern. So, to, to alleviate that concern, we established Fund 99 with that ordinance, which continues to this day. And any capital asset that has been disposed of by the city, the money for that, whether it was $100 or $100,000, has been placed in, in Fund 99. So, and, and I think with, you know, hopefully seeing some movement again on getting the city hall built, that's where the money is. And so, so it's safe and sound, it didn't get spent, and we're able to rebuild our home base. Okay? Thank you. And also, as you know, it does provide for if there was emergency or change circumstances, three-fourths of council can, can vote to reallocate those funds to another purpose.
Yeah, that looks clear.
It is all council's authority on how those funds are ultimately used for capital improvements.
Thank you.
All right. This kind of clears things up and we'll start the process forward again. I know we have some in, in the pipeline, so we're about, so seeing some of those come back to us, at least first to P&amp;Z or if they've been P&amp;Z. All right. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, obtain a motion for item seven.
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-2218, amending the zoning code, Article 6, Section 6.3, Subsection 6.3, point, no?
2.6.
Oh.
That's the end of our ordinance.
Oh. I'm going to move on one. Sorry, move to approve the notice of intent to adopt O-2217, amending city code, Article 2.6.9, procedures for the transfer of real, city real property. Is that due?
Have a motion, second, approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-2217, amending the city code for the procedures of transfer of real property. No call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to item eight, this is a public hearing and discussion on the possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-2218. This is amending of the zoning code, Article 6, Section 6.3, Subsection 6.3.1D, accessory Who you would like to make the presentation? Yeah, City Council.
Mayor Council, this is an item that Joe Ward put forward to, to P&amp;Z, and it was recommended to council to amend to change the setback requirement for outbuildings, for accessory buildings from three feet to five feet from the property line, and the purpose being to provide additional space for fire protection and things of, it provides for an additional two-foot adjustment, and of course, that only applies to those buildings that are. Question? Our help from time of approval forward. It wouldn't require anybody to go back and move something.
There is grand law. So, really quickly, we have a public hearing on this also tonight?
I believe so. I'm just saying, we had it set up for a public hearing, so if you want to just open the public hearing, ask if there's any, any comments, and then closing.
I'll do it, since we have such, such a big audience. Open a public hearing on adopting, you have notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-2218, which is amending the zoning code, Article 6, Section 6.3, Subsection 6.3.1, on accessory buildings, basic changes, setbacks from three feet to five feet. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of such? Seeing none, is anybody in favor of speaking against this ordinance? Seeing none, any written communication?
None.
Seeing none, I close the public hearing. This one won't require a vote, so anybody?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance 0-2218, amending the zoning code, Article 6, Section 6.3, Subsection 6.3.1D, accessory buildings.
I'll second that. We have a motion, a second, to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-2218. No call.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. All right, that includes that, and we'll move on to general business, and we'll move to the City Attorney's Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several items this evening. First, wanted to give you an update on the owner-occupied and rehab project in Saginaw. As you know, and as the two Ward, one reps know better than anyone, and, and the mayor, we, on the basis of the subdivision known as Saginaw being designated as a colonial, we have now, we now have the opportunity for special CDBG funding to do rehab projects on individual buildings based on criteria set forth by the feds. When we got that designation, it came with a, a, a two-week notice to get applications in, which is hardly enough time to do much of anything in government, and yet, we were able to manage to get five applications submitted. So, this is a competitive funding cycle, and lo and behold, after the deadline, we received another phone call advising us that there was something over $1 million still left on the table that absolutely no one in the state of Arizona had applied for. Therefore, they have asked us to find 10 more properties to do the rehab on, and we have already begun, we have, we have a bit of a waiting list because there, because of the short space of time, there were three applications that we just couldn't get done quickly enough. And of course, Melissa's already contacted those folks, and we're, and we're going to get those three applications. So, basically, we're not looking for seven more properties in Saginaw, okay? So, so since this is a, a public and publicly broadcast meeting tonight, if you live in Saginaw, or if you know anyone, or are related to anyone who lives in Saginaw, who could use up to $15,000 for their owner-occupied residence for rehab and do rough pay job site, you know, projects like that, we would suggest that you give Melissa a call, and you can reach her by calling the city number at 432-6000 and asking for Melissa. You'll probably have to leave a message, but Melissa will call you back and we'll start the process. We, we do have a couple of other properties in Saginaw that we've sort of decided that we're going to approach the owners because we know they could, they could use something like this and maybe up into 10 to contact us in, in, in the first iteration of this program. But, I mean, suffice to say, there is absolutely, we're absolutely thrilled, Seago's absolutely thrilled. It is, it isn't very often that your luck is this good, that you put in five applications and somebody asks you to get 10 more. And so, we're hoping, we're hoping that we don't have to call medics for lessons.
Good, sorry.
But, the, but we're going to proceed with all deliberate speed. We've got, what, three months? Is that what we get, three months on this one?
Yes, and letters went out today to, we did it, we did the same flood of letters to all of the individuals, and I'll have applications at city hall again, and then I'll be out knocking on doors.
So, good news, quite frankly. And item number two, still in the housing area, we just wanted you to know that, that Cochise Row Home and the D Street Home that we have acquired in, well, Cochise Row was an empty lot, the city owned already, and we built a house on, that is ready to sell. We've got a couple people on the list that we pulled a few weeks ago who we're contacting right now to see if they want to buy. The house on D Street doesn't have a certificate of occupancy yet, but it's probably going to get one by the end of the week, well, maybe next week. And at that point, then we can offer that property for sale. If the existing group that had expressed an interest chooses not to purchase either one of these properties, we'll start the process over again. We have already, well, Thursday's paycheck will include a flyer for every employee to see if they're interested to contact Melissa. We've also sent similar flyers over to the school district offices. Hopefully, they'll be distributed amongst the staff at the schools, they're at the board office. So, for those of you who may happen to work for the school district, you might want to ask to see where those are because we really, really would like applicants from the district as well. And we do know that some flyers went over to the Copper Queen. Probably going to send some over to Chiricahua. Probably gonna send some over to Chiricahua Clinic as well, since they're in the same business as the hospital. So that should hit a good slug of the local workforce, and, and we'll, we'll see where that goes. Also, a property the city owns on N Street, that's N like in Nicholas. That's property the city has owned for quite some time. Don't know why, don't know how, but we own it. There was a dilapidated home on there that was not worth anything but to scrape off, so we've done that. And Step Up Business Naco is doing the plans and design, built a small house on that property. Generally speaking, that probably will be available for sale in the spring. We do have a couple of other properties that we haven't gotten started with, but we wanna turn over some of the ones we've already done so we put the money in the bank to invest in the next ones. And so it, it's picked up a little bit of steam. I wish it was still a little bit faster, but when, when your labor is primarily volunteer, you don't push the envelope too hard. So, and they've done a great job. So, anyway, that's that. Jason wanted you all to know, wanted the public to know that, that Library is celebrating this year its one-hundred-and-fourtieth anniversary. Now, a hundred and forty years, I, I believe that predates the existing building by, by some years. And so, because I'm thinking it's in the hundred-and-teens at this point somewhere. Sorry, I can get the exact year for you. But through the year, he's going to probably be scheduling some activities to, you know, at the anniversary. But, but I think mostly what he wanted to get out there was that, you know, aren't very many cities in the United States have had a library for a hundred and forty years. And so that, that too is, is a lot to be proud of. And then I just have one more thing here. This morning, a, a donation got dropped off in front of City Hall. And the police chief's gonna be really happy about this. I don't think he's been told yet.
He did.
Oh, he did. You told him?
I told him.
You know, we, we've all been talking about where, where is the speed trailer? Okay, remember we had the speed trailer? We used to post it and get people to slow down. And then it went bad, and a bunch of people tried to fix it, including current mayor and a former mayor. Nobody could make it work, and so eventually it became scrap metal. So anyway, thanks to Joe Estes, who is probably the biggest scrounger that I've met since Leonard Temby, has generously donated one that he happened to acquire just recently. And so I wanna say thanks, Joe, for getting us back in that business. And, and so with that comes an expectation, doesn't it? That means we're gonna see it out on the street where you're slowing, slowing folks down in areas where we have issues before. So, thank you, Joe. I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Thank you. No comments on this, but we'll retain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All who's in favor, to adjourn, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Here you go, the ayes have it. We are adjourned.
It's a happy meeting today.